Not yet. Let it be a resolution to purchase a Polaris UTV enclosed trailer. Chiefs Akaro, you want to add anything for this?
As you know, the board has, uh, someone Schmidt who gave us a $50,000 grant for UTV and trailer. Done all, completed all the paperwork for the grant. We just have to purchase the UTV and trailer and then submit the paperwork.
For improvement.
So this goes back a little while, but there was a delay in ordering the UTV. So hopefully there's not much more of a delay, but the trailers are in stock. The price hasn't changed. I'm just making sure the price hasn't turned to UTV.
Okay, any motion? Resolution of the Village of Washingtonville Village Board of Trustees authorizing the purchase of a law enforcement UTV enclosed trailer. The village will receive money spent that we grant. So a motion was made by trustee Kolor.
I'll segment it.
Segmented by trustee Kolor. Local trustee Kolor?
Yes.
Trustee Kolor?
Yes.
Trustee Sampson?
Yes.
May have a lot of, yes. Moving on. Presentation of the proposed village hall and village of Washingtonville police headquarters. CL Studio设计，please come up. You have a microphone. Well, I'll just give a brief history of what we, uh... We are looking to move the police headquarters from present location into this building. So renovation will be going forward with this. These plans are preliminary plans. As we were saying earlier, the course of the sale of the police station, we will be going out asking several realtors for their proposal. The course of that sale, we want to take care of this renovation here. So we're not adding more, more money to the residents. So we're going to do it as closely as possible so that that doesn't happen going out for another bond. I believe the bond for this building is finally coming to an end next year. $2.6 million bond that has been paid off. So sit back, enjoy presentation.
So my name is Catherine Legadakis from CL Studio Design Associates.
Can't hear you.
Still can't, no. Okay, so Catherine Legadakis from CL Studio Design Associates, and this is Teresa Schultz. She is a designer on this team. Thank you for allowing us today to present this plan to you. We are really excited about this project. We feel privileged to be able to be on it. We were brought on this project to resolve various issues that we had for both the village hall and the police department. In the current circumstances, only a portion of this building is actually being used. Oh, sorry.
Here we go.
Is that better? Okay. So like I was saying, that the present circumstances, only a portion of this building is actually being used today. So there is approximately 4,500 square feet of space, available square footage in this building that we have available, which is also not used, but also being heated and cooled, right? So not used to its best. Additionally, the current police station has completely outgrown their space and is unable to expand where needed. As you can see in these photos, they are currently using under the desk for additional storage. They've, they're using the restroom for additional storage. Some of the rooms are being multi-purposed, and you have a break room that's also a conference room, storage, a server room, a training facility, a gun cleaning location, and then locker room is, is in the boiler room. So the question was posed to us if we can take, take these two buildings and combine it into one space and use up the available square footage. So for many reasons, in addition to some of the ones provided in Chief Zakaro's letter to the village board, we feel that it makes sense. Using the available portion of the building will not only allow for growth of the police department, but would also maximize the functional spaces that are in this building today. We also would like to see, you know, additional, the parking facility available to the police department so they have easy access going in and out of, of the station in case of responses to emergency calls. So through the detailed review of the program's requirements, we analyzed the needs and the functions of each space and created a solution that we have here today. Our space planning design concept maximizes the square footage available. So we're going to be presenting this plan to you in two sections. And we've broken up the sections. We're going to begin with the village hall, and the north part of the drawing is the police department. So that is grayed out, and we're going to walk you through the white portion of the plan, which is the village hall. Starting from the main entry in the village hall, we've kept it in the same location where it is today, where you enter through these doors. We propose to add a, an exterior vestibule to prevent any heat loss or cooling loss, protect from the elements, as well as additional security. Once you enter the building, you're welcomed by the receptionist. The receptionist is going to control who enters into the building through this door. The lobby space will also accommodate the entry into the courtroom, have guest seating, and allow you to visit with the court clerk. Through the controlled doorway, a guest can then enter and have access to the public area such as the restroom, the stairs, the elevator, and the connection corridors. Shown here is a corridor connecting the village hall to the police department. In this corridor, you have access to a secondary courtroom entrance as well as the conference room slash jury room. This conference room and jury room is designed to serve both the village hall and the police department. So returning to the central public area, you have the restrooms, you have the water fountain, and a secure entry into the judges' and clerk's office. The judges' chamber will accommodate two judges and will share a private corridor with the court clerk. The corridor allows for vault security and ease of communication between the two of them. Within the common space discussed previously, we have created an access to an existing stair that can be used to go to the second floor. So whether you choose to take the stairs or the elevator, you wind up on the second floor at this location. So from here, from this point, you can go to the building department or the water department. Across the way is the administrative office, including the mayor and the clerk and storage available. Within the main corridor, you have public restrooms, staircase to the attic, storage, janitor's closet, server closet, and a shared kitchenette. At the end of the corridor, we have an additional shared conference room with two entrances. And then lastly, at the end, is the stairs that connects you to the police department and an emergency exit on the first floor. So we've come around full circle. We're now down on the first floor. We're going to walk you through the police department, and the great area is the village hall. So we're starting with the police department. The entry in the vestibule to, to the police department is going to be added on the face of the building along Route 94. Connected to this entry is a reception, communication, and dispatch room who has control of the entry to the rest of the space through this door. Once you go past this door, you have a restroom and two interview rooms. One interview room will be a dedicated juvenile room, which is required by the state. Continuing down the hall, if you go to the right, you have the patrol room. Through this door, you have the patrol room up at the top. And if you go to the left, you have the corridor that connects back to that access hallway. This corridor is useful when transporting a suspect from holding patrol into the courtroom so that you can go through that secondary door. Once you are inside the patrol room, you are, you have a direct connection from communications and dispatch through both a window and a door. And within the patrol, there is a processing holding cell and a dedicated restroom. There is also a secondary back entry that's connected to a secure outdoor carport where officers can enter the building from the back with any apprehended suspects that go directly in through the back. In this corridor, we have various accommodations for storage. At the end of the corridor is the equipment room and the evidence room, and a second entry into the patrol room. If you continue through the patrol room, you're back at the staircase where the emergency exit is, and that leads directly upstairs. So it'll take you through the second floor of the patrol area. So as you can see, when you land at the top of these stairs, you're in that common corridor we discussed earlier. From this common corridor, the main entry to the police portion of this floor can be found through this doorway here. Once you're through the door, you're in the police department. There is a separate staircase that leads directly to the outside, and this will be secured with a key card access and will be for police personnel. Directly across from that is the IT closet. Down the hall to the left, we have the locker rooms where we've dedicated the men's and the women's locker room, and we also have a unisex restroom. Adjacent to that is the sergeant's office where we have allocated three desks, three sergeants, sorry, with their own desk and guest chairs. Adjacent to that is the detective's office where there's two detectives with ample seating for guests. Across from the detective's office is an interview room. And then down the hall is the chief's office with much-needed storage, and that's required. And then there, we have additional storage down the hall and as well across the way. And then there is the conference room, which is going to be used for both the village hall and the police department. So that's going to be a second conference room that's shared between both disciplines. This is a three-dimensional view of the first floor, just to give you a different rendition of the space. And then this is the second floor. And to, last thing to close down, we have those plans side by side so you can see them together.
What's the, do you, the square footage of the police department now is 1250. The total square foot, footage of the police department and village hall, I think we had that somewhere.
Yeah.
We didn't bring that.
That's all right. But it's, it's definitely more than, more than doubling or tripling the size of the police department, and village hall has definitely increased the size too.
Yes. I think we're maximizing functionality of the spaces in the village hall as well.
It's nice that the two are aligned so we're not heating and cooling, you know, like you said earlier. Upstairs is a conditioned space. We have storage of files upstairs. So now it's going to be another one, one room. If there's ever a emergency, the police could get out and go to where they have to go. Right now, if there's a car parked on Route 94 at the driveway, there's no other way to get out of the police department. This is where the population is. The population of the village is in this area. So...
I, I also like these plans that maximize the spaces that are utilized by both. So if the room isn't being utilized by the jury, there's no jury, you know, the police department can have meetings there, can have training sessions there. So there's, you know, there's function for a couple of spaces that we have allocated. Connection corridors connecting all the police and the village hall as well.
So to answer your question on the first floor, there's 2,612 square feet that's dedicated solely to the police department and 2,075 square feet that's dedicated solely to the police department on the second floor, not including the shared public spaces like the conference break and restrooms.
You had a lot of obstacles. Every time you presented with us, there was something else. The police have a lot of requirements that are needed by, by the state.
That's what I was going to comment. A lot of this is mandated by the state.
Yes.
So I think you hit a home run with it.
Thank you. I'm really excited about this project. This is very successful.
Mike Presi, uh, what if you do as far as parking is concerned? I know the laws have time issues and things like that. What are you doing as far as...
We're going to open it up to the public in a minute.
What we'll do is open it up. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. It's okay. I'll get, I'll get the hang of this. Us men, us men always just talk. We don't listen. We just talk.
First of all, I'm a retired teacher, and the way you presented that made it so much easier to follow. Because I was, I sat here because I was like, I'm not going to be able to follow this, and I was afraid, I thought you were going to have a little stick up there. You know, just, just doing that that way made it so much easier. The only, I, I don't see, I see storage in a lot of areas, but in the courtroom, I didn't see any storage.
In the, in the courtroom itself?
Court, well, the judges' area, the clerk, that kind of area. I didn't see any storage posted.
So there is...
In the bottom left.
Yeah. In the judges' chambers, we have that long, very long closet that's included there.
And that door's open?
That door's open.
You have a step, okay, that gate. Oh, yeah. And that's enough space for that?
Uh, for that, for the two judges.
For the judges, yes. And then the clerk has this wall of storage with a filing and file cabinet, which is returned into both closet and file cabinets as well.
How many, how many attitudes we really did it to put on a table?
Yes, we do have in the conference room also a long closet that...
Would you reach that high?
Just pull the screen down.
So there, there are closets that can be turned to face different directions. If it's not needed within the jury room, it could be, if it's needed more in the hallway, we could put the doors facing the hallway. Same thing with the closet that's on the north side of that jury room that's facing the PD. We see that we have ample storage in the PD.
And this is not using the handle cord, right? That we have?
That is. The top left, top left.
Yeah, the second floor.
So everything from this staircase here, so the locker rooms and that toilet is being milled out, and a portion of that's already done.
And what's on the first floor there?
Um, the first floor is existing.
Yeah, but the, it's the evidence room.
Oh, the bump out, okay.
The bump out is, is equipment and evidence, and of course, you know, it was also, you know, the holding cell and processing.
That bump out right now is right through there.
Right, not through the current jury.
So I do have a question too. It's aligned with what he asked. Will the police be parking in front of the building? Do you guys know? And, uh, village parking lot be where it is now? Will you be adding a parking lot towards the front and driveway or certain way?
Be ideal. Because we're trying to name our park.
Well, probably be parking in the front.
Well, in the, in the back, we can, we...
The port.
The port.
We, we were proposing to have a connection to the back entry of the police department, a secure entry that the police officer can pull into that's, uh, what is it?
The cell.
It's a secure port that they would pull in and unload.
But the rest of the cars, would they park at front?
Front.
I meant like, like you come into work.
How are you, yeah. I had some minor discussions about it, but I think it hasn't been settled. I think you have to kind of separate the police from employees and the public for court. So I, my idea would be the police car, the police cars in the back of the lot.
Back where we do.
Secure, you know? The side being for employees parking and, and guests, and we, I don't know, the road frontage, what can be done there? Additional parking, maybe some parking.
I think we would go into that. You know, what, what we, uh, right now, this building is on a private road.
Right.
The entrance and exit is on a private road. So the entrance will be coming off Route 94. Okay? So the parking lot that we have now, by closing off those two entrances, and then the one entrance and one exit, probably look at an additional six spots for just that, the reconfiguration of parking. But at least we, we won't have to pay to have our own platter in the wintertime. Even though we have six platters, we still have to pay to have this one. So there's savings everywhere, everywhere, you know, from the trash, you know, trash of buildings. The, the heating and cooling, you know, the tremendous, telephones, lights. So there's a tremendous savings as...
The maintenance of a very old building.
The maintenance of a very old building.
And the savings of our electric, yes.
You know, if you look at, you know, the chief put together a, a great list of what that building would need if we, if we left it alone, if we left everything alone.
So, Chief, Chief, how, how long have you been in Washington as a police officer slash chief?
I hired in 96.
So 96 to now, how many officers do you remember back then to what we have now?
We've increased a lot. You know, just by adding schools in 2018, we had, we had five people just there. We definitely not growing our space. It's 1,250 square feet roughly. The building is, according to the report, was built in 1917, and our adjutant's knows a lot of the history of the building. When a truck drives past, the building shakes. You can look at a, you can look at our filing cabinets, they're shifted. We're against the wall, you know, it's an inch on the bottom and four inches on the top. Windows alone, the windows, the exterior doors are the original from 94. The windows, as I put, we have portable leaders that we're using because it gets so cold in a few of the offices. The heat is just blowing out the front door, and those doors have to be replaced, and the windows have to be replaced if we're staying in the building. And it's custom windows according to our adjutant's.
It's a difference, yeah. We're not standard size.
So that cost alone on the windows and the doors is a lot of money, you know? So I just, you know, that's, those are big, big costs right there.
Did I miss the cell? Where's the cell?
The processing and, uh, patrol, up in the patrol room. It's in the, the, the second room, probably the last.
Is it anything like the cell name?
No, this has a TV where the son of the prisoner, rubbing his shoulder.
I had a WebEx meeting today with Department of Corrections. It has to, under their, their rules, we have to have certain material and have certain size. So they reviewed the plan today. They like the layout. We just have to make some tweaks on the material that we're going to use for the windows in the, in the booking slash cell area. Make sure it's stay in the steel bathroom.
Is the, is the cell a unisex cell?
Yeah. So if you put a male detainee in there, the same sex officer has to be in there. So we have a female, uh, one dispatcher is a female, uh, page. Dispatcher, yeah, dispatcher, so, patron, so, matron. Matron, I'm sorry. Because she's a matron, so if we do have a female in custody that needs to be placed in the cell, we have to use her or another female officer from somewhere else. That doesn't happen quite often because normally you don't put the females in the cell unless they're very non-compliant, spitting, things like that. Put them in there to kind of protect, for them to protect you. So that doesn't happen at law firm, but it does happen.
Well, within the processing, we did allocate a bench that we can have also outside, outside of the cell.
It's still secured.
Secured within the process.
And the, she's got the window of the cement blocks there to kind of close the evidence room in the cell. Close that.
So it's the extension process.
It's sort of a maximal space, which is nice to have. You didn't think you would be able to do it. But we fought. We said, yes, you will.
So it's like a puzzle. We just have to find the right pieces.
That's great. Yeah, the next step now, if you go back to the forensics, would be to break trades and, and we'd probably allow for preliminary data on this. Lighting plan.
Yeah.
And natural lighting and so forth.
HVAC.
HVAC, which pretty much is in, it's already here. Upstairs, the lighting is already there also. We might have to move some of our fixtures. Ceiling upstairs is presently sheep dropped. I think there were plans, you know, many years ago to do something up there. Lighting up there, again, it's recessed lighting, not like here, they're high hats. So we might decide to go with surface mounted fixtures, you know? And then as far as furniture, that's...
You can do it at those.
But I think we could get a preliminary ballpark based on what we have here, taking from the various contact with, with various trades and see what we really have to tweak. I mean, this is in stone, although I wish it could be, wish it was. And then we could start taking applications from realtors regarding the building that they're present in. So hopefully, it's even...
Think can the courtroom have a village wall manage the self-love instructions going on?
It's going to be, I think it's going to be difficult. I mean, if worse came to worse, I believe you had a trailer outside at one time?
That was when we were in the old building. The last time we renovated here, we rented space and the building back.
Yeah. So if we have to get trailers from, you know, strictly to the patrol, we could hold court, I think they held court at Montal, was it?
It has to be within the building.
Has to be within the building.
Both the second court and the shelter.
Yes. I, I think the, the progress would be getting the patrol completed. That's going to be, walking people through the building, you know, safely. Nice job.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Can we just unplug?
It was hot, right?
No, I did not touch the air. It's 74 degrees.
He took my agenda.
Cold is very expensive.
We have a report.
Somebody put the arrows. I can only imagine the violence.
Let's get a desk. All right, we're going to go into a technical session like I mentioned earlier in the meeting for personnel. Our next meeting, village board meeting, is Tuesday, December 20th. Again, if you had sent your name in for interest on being part of the comprehensive committee, you'll be receiving a letter probably by the end of this week, looking at either Wednesday or Thursday, depending on, I believe there's a zoning board meeting on Thursday of next week, which I don't believe applications have come up, so it's probably looking at Thursday more than Wednesday. Really just for, this is what we're looking to accomplish.
Did you get a decent proposal?
We did, yeah. A lot of people showed interest.
Should be a lot more.
And there will be a lot more as we grow. You know, like I said, I believe I told you earlier, you can't make one, it's not a club where you, where you're not, you can't come to the next one. Everything will be recorded, right? So if you're not on the committee but wish to join somewhere down the line, you can review the meetings. One thing we do have to be careful of is our time, okay? It's a six-month moratorium with the extension of six months and six months, okay? They really don't want us to go beyond that, all right? The state, I sat down with, I brought the local law up to the state. We had a talk for about a half hour. They really don't want you to continue kicking the ball down the line. The county is on board with us. We had a great meeting with them, which will help us in the end moving this through the county, okay? So they'll come up with some comments, we can address the comments, or the village board can say, "Thank you for your comment, but this is what the residents want," and so, all positive stuff, so.
Good night. No, we're going to.
Okay, so the next meeting, hope to see you on the December 20th, Tuesday night at 7:00 PM, all right?